Good evening and welcome to the December 23, 2019 meeting of the Shawnee City Council. I would ask that you please silence your electronic devices at this time. I am Mayor Michelle Diston. I'll be chairing this meeting. I'll do a roll call at this time. Councilmember Zimmerman.
Present.
Councilmember Neiber.
Present.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Present.
Councilmember Kimling.
Present.
Councilmember Meyer.
Present.
Councilmember Larson-Bennell.
Present.
Councilmember Sandifer.
Present.
Councilmember Constance.
Present.
And then we have some scouts here tonight, so if you could please come forward and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence. You ready?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would you like to introduce yourselves and tell us what troop you're with?
I'm Leon.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, I'll explain our procedures for public input. During the meeting, I'll offer the opportunity for public input. If you'd like to speak to the council at any of those times, please come forward to the microphone. I'll ask you to state your name and address for the record, and then you may offer your comments. So that members of the audience can hear your comments, I would ask that you speak directly into the microphone. By policy, comments are limited to five minutes. No person may speak more than twice to any one agenda item. Only comments related to city business are permitted. Comments and remarks that are personal, impertinent, or slanderous are not permitted. Disruptive acts are not permitted. After you're finished, please sign the form on the podium to ensure we have an accurate record of your name and address. In addition, while we won't do a roll call vote on every vote, I will state councilmembers' names who vote in minority, so that our listening audience will have a clear and accurate record of the vote. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Does anyone have an item they'd like to remove from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll accept a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion for approval.
Motion has been made, seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next item is mayor's items. I do not have any items tonight. The next item is business from the floor. Is there anyone who has comments on an issue that is not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none. Next item on the agenda is public items. Item number one is to consider resolution number 1899 approving and authorizing the mayor to sign the deed and related documents containing property to JHB Properties LLC in connection with exercise of purchase option. In 2007, the city issued its federally taxable private activity revenue bond, series 2007, related to JHB Properties LLC. The bonds were paid off on March 27, 2019. They have requested to exercise their option to purchase the project as provided in the lease. Approval is required by the governing body to sign the deed and release the documents. Recommended actions, consider adopting resolution number 1899. Does anyone on council have any questions? Anyone from the audience like to speak to this item? I'll accept a motion.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion has been made, seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item number two is to conduct a public hearing and consider passing ordinance number 3306, adopting Stag's Spring Tax Increment Financing Project Plan and approving the execution of a redevelopment agreement and adopting resolution number 1900, the intent to issue federally taxable private activity revenue bonds. On October 28, 2019, the governing body approved, we established a TIF district referred to as Stag's Spring TIF District. On November 4, 2019, the Planning Commission voted 7-0, finding the TIF project plan consistent with the comprehensive plan. On November 12, 2019, the City Council adopted resolution number 1895, calling for a public hearing on the TIF project plan. A public hearing and ordinance and a resolution are required. I'll accept a motion to conduct a public hearing concerning the consideration of a redevelopment project and adoption of a redevelopment project plan for a project area and redevelopment district related to Stag's Spring.
Second.
Motion has been made, seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. We are now in a public hearing. This is a formal public hearing required by law. Tyler Ellsworth and Kutaq Rock is here to make a few comments. Please come forward.
Good evening, and thank you, Mayor and council. I do have just a few brief remarks about the items that you're being asked to consider tonight in connection with the Stag's Spring project. The items you're being asked to consider are the TIF project plan, the redevelopment agreement for the project, and a resolution of intent for industrial revenue bonds. So briefly, the ordinance that's on your agenda, if you approve it, approves the TIF project plan and authorizes the mayor to execute the redevelopment agreement. The intent to issue industrial revenue bonds is accomplished through the resolution of intent. That's the second item on the agenda. The TIF project plan is in your materials, and it outlines the elements of the project. I think as everybody knows by now, this is an 85,000 square foot multifamily apartment project. The developer has requested assistance in the form of tax increment financing. The request is to use the property tax generated from the new construction over a term of 20 years to reimburse the developer for certain costs, including land acquisition, site preparation, infrastructure, things of that nature. The first 10 years of that 20-year term, the developer has requested, and we have agreed under the development agreement, to provide 100% of the tax increment back to the developer to reimburse costs. The second 10 years of the 20-year term would be an 80% reimbursement of those tax increments. I'm happy to answer any specific questions about the development agreement, but other than that, that's really the extent of the deal.
Anyone on the council have any questions?
All right. Thank you.
So anyone from the audience that would like to speak to this item, specific to the incident? Seeing none, I'll accept the motion to conclude the public hearing.
Second.
Motion has been made, seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. The public hearing is closed. There are two recommended actions to consider. The first recommended action is consider passing ordinance number 3306. Six votes are required for approval. Does anyone on the council have any questions? Anyone from the audience like to speak to this item? I'll accept a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made, seconded on this item. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is from the Planning Commission meeting. Item number one is to consider approval of SUP 041912, a special use permit for amusement and live entertainment in the Commercial Neighborhood Zoning District for Incredible Pizza located at 13110 West 62nd Terrace. On December 2, 2019, the Planning Commission recommended 11-0. The governing body approved the special use permit subject to the conditions in the staff report. Does anyone on the council have any questions? Anyone from the audience like to speak to this item? I'll accept a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made, seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is from the Planning Commission meeting. Item number one is to consider approval of SUP 041912, a special use permit for amusement and live entertainment in the Commercial Neighborhood Zoning District for Incredible Pizza located at 13110 West 62nd Terrace. On December 2, 2019, the Planning Commission recommended 11-0. The governing body approved the special use permit subject to the conditions in the staff report. Does anyone on the council have any questions? Anyone from the audience like to speak to this item? I'll accept a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made, seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is from the Planning Commission meeting. Item number one is to consider approval of SUP 041912, a special use permit for amusement and live entertainment in the Commercial Neighborhood Zoning District for Incredible Pizza located at 13110 West 62nd Terrace. On December 2, 2019, the Planning Commission recommended 11-0. The governing body approved the special use permit subject to the conditions in the staff report. Does anyone on the council have any questions? Anyone from the audience like to speak to this item? I'll accept a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made, seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item number two is to consider ordinance number 3307, Z101219, rezoning from planned unit development mixed use to commercial highway. Ordinance number 3308, Z111219, rezoning from planned unit development mixed use to residential high-rise for Belmont Promenade located on the 16100 to 16300 blocks of 66 Terrace. On December 2, 2019, the Planning Commission recommended 11-0. The governing body approved the rezoning subject to the conditions listed in the staff report. Two ordinances are required. First recommended action is consider passing ordinance number 3307 for Z101219. Does anyone on council have any questions? Anyone from the audience like to speak to this item? I'll accept a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made, seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item number two is to consider ordinance number 3307, Z101219, rezoning from planned unit development mixed use to commercial highway. Ordinance number 3308, Z111219, rezoning from planned unit development mixed use to residential high-rise for Belmont Promenade located on the 16100 to 16300 blocks of 66 Terrace. On December 2, 2019, the Planning Commission recommended 11-0. The governing body approved the rezoning subject to the conditions listed in the staff report. Two ordinances are required. First recommended action is consider passing ordinance number 3307 for Z101219. Does anyone on council have any questions? Anyone from the audience like to speak to this item? I'll accept a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made, seconded on this item. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item number two is to consider ordinance number 3307, Z101219, rezoning from planned unit development mixed use to commercial highway. Ordinance number 3308, Z111219, rezoning from planned unit development mixed use to residential high-rise for Belmont Promenade located on the 16100 to 16300 blocks of 66 Terrace. On December 2, 2019, the Planning Commission recommended 11-0. The governing body approved the rezoning subject to the conditions listed in the staff report. Two ordinances are required. First recommended action is consider passing ordinance number 3307 for Z101219. Does anyone on council have any questions? Anyone from the audience like to speak to this item? I'll accept a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made, seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item number two is to consider ordinance number 3307, Z101219, rezoning from planned unit development mixed use to commercial highway. Ordinance number 3308, Z111219, rezoning from planned unit development mixed use to residential high-rise for Belmont Promenade located on the 16100 to 16300 blocks of 66 Terrace. On December 2, 2019, the Planning Commission recommended 11-0. The governing body approved the rezoning subject to the conditions listed in the staff report. Two ordinances are required. First recommended action is consider passing ordinance number 3307 for Z101219. Does anyone on council have any questions? Anyone from the audience like to speak to this item? I'll accept a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made, seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item number two is to consider ordinance number 3307, Z101219, rezoning from planned unit development mixed use to commercial highway. Ordinance number 3308, Z111219, rezoning from planned unit development mixed use to residential high-rise for Belmont Promenade located on the 16100 to 16300 blocks of 66 Terrace. On December 2, 2019, the Planning Commission recommended 11-0. The governing body approved the rezoning subject to the conditions listed in the staff report. Two ordinances are required. First recommended action is consider passing ordinance number 3307 for Z101219. Does anyone on council have any questions? Anyone from the audience like to speak to this item? I'll accept a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made, seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item number two is to consider ordinance number 3307, Z101219, rezoning from planned unit development mixed use to commercial highway. Ordinance number 3308, Z111219, rezoning from planned unit development mixed use to residential high-rise for Belmont Promenade located on the 16100 to 16300 blocks of 66 Terrace. On December 2, 2019, the Planning Commission recommended 11-0. The governing body approved the rezoning subject to the conditions listed in the staff report. Two ordinances are required. First recommended action is consider passing ordinance number 3307 for Z101219. Does anyone on council have any questions? Anyone from the audience like to speak to this item? I'll accept a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made, seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Item number two is to consider ordinance number 3307, Z101219, rezoning from planned unit development mixed residential to planned unit development mixed residential with a preliminary development plan for Woodsonia West multifamily, a townhome and apartment project located at 5100 to 5300 blocks of Woodsonia Drive. On November 18, 2019, the Planning Commission recommended 7-0. The governing body approved the rezoning. On December 9, 2019, the governing body tabled this item to tonight's meeting so the developer can make various revisions to the plan. A valid protest petition was received, therefore, three votes, force vote of the governing body for seven votes would be required to pass the ordinance. Recommended action is consider passing ordinance number 3309. Doug Allman, the Community Development Director, will make a brief presentation followed by questions of the governing body. Pete, okay, Pete Heaven, please come forward. Sorry.
Happy holidays to the mayor and council. Hope you have a good season. My name is Pete Heaven. My address is 6201 College Boulevard in Overland Park, and I represent the developer Greg Preeb. When we were here on the 9th of December, I heard comments from the council, from the audience. We were asked to take another look at our development plan, and specifically, the concerns we heard had to do with the north end of our project. And can I get a copy of the development plan up by chance? That's it. When you look at the plan, north is to your left, south is to your right. We eliminated a 26-unit apartment building on the north end of the project, and in its place put three townhome units, or townhome buildings. We increased the open area. We removed a large retaining wall that was stated to be objectionable, and we rerouted our drive to 51st Street so that traffic leaving our project will not shine lights into the neighbors' homes. As a result of this, our density was decreased by about 13 units, and we believe we satisfied those who had concerns about the north end. But we were also asked to visit with the neighbors, and we visited with Patrick Fitzgerald at City Hall on the 12th of December, had a good conference with him, and promised to follow up with some answers to questions, which Mr. Preeb and I did on Saturday afternoon on the 14th. Mr. Fitzgerald said that he would like to see some sight renderings to give him a better idea of what people would see from Woodsonia Drive once our project is completed. His concern was specifically sightlines of the apartment buildings, not the townhomes. We then set out to get the drawings done, which we had to use both an American architect and a Chinese architect, because the Chinese could work all of our nights, and we could work all of their nights. So we did 24/7, finished those in three days, and got those to Mr. Fitzgerald. We also sent drawings of our amenity package, which is enhanced now with a lake, and sent those on the 20th. We've not heard from Mr. Fitzgerald since. I suspect we'll hear from him tonight. Greg Preeb also spoke with the president of the Woodsonia Homes Association last week and discussed some beautification ideas about Woodsonia Drive, those being putting wrought iron fence on both sides of Woodsonia Drive, enhanced vegetation, burning, things of that nature, to give both projects a win-win. Unfortunately, we received a text the evening he spoke with the Homes Association, which I'll quote, "We are unwilling to negotiate a deal until there are fundamental changes in the number of units, building height, and traffic concerns." I will tell you, I don't know what deal we're talking about, and I'm really not too sure what fundamental means, but fundamental is like changing from multifamily to single family. I'm sorry, I just don't know exactly what the Homes Association wants, but it's clear from that message, they don't want to talk. So I believe we've tried to do everything in our power to communicate, modify our plan to make it more palatable. We've tried to compromise, and I think tonight we're ready for final disposition of this matter. I would like to make a couple of comments, though, about our role tonight. As a quasi-judicial body, you have to consider the facts in a zoning decision. And before I get to our specific facts, I'd like to remind you of a couple of things. On four separate occasions, your professional planning staff has recommended a multifamily project for this land. Four separate occasions. On four separate occasions, your Planning Commission has recommended approval of a multifamily project, and has found specifically that the golden criteria have been met, and this use is consistent with the land use guide. On three prior occasions, this city council has approved multifamily projects for this property, and found compliance with the golden criteria, and found that multifamily use is consistent with the comprehensive plan as well as the future use plan. Since 1996, nothing has really changed. The land is still as it was in 1996, except our infrastructure has gotten better. Our ability to service our citizens has gotten better, all which would lead to maybe a higher density. But nothing has been done. Mr. Preeb proposes a $50 million project on this site. He's going to have market rents of $1,200 to $1,500 per unit. He has suggested enhanced architecture I've never seen before, where you have two front elevations on townhomes, so that the backs appear to be fronts on Woodsonia Drive. We have over 50% open space on this property, and we have enhanced amenities, including a lake, a fishing lake, as well as a pool. But in addition to the history of our property, it's important to note what this city council has actually approved as recently as 2017. Mr. Sandeman in his staff report pointed out a new development called Calamar, which is at 72nd and Silver Hill. That is two miles from this site on K7 on the east side. The plan was approved by this city council in 2017, and construction has started on a large three-story apartment building. The density of this property is 17.5 units per acre. Our density is 14.1, which I'll get to in just a moment. The future land use guide said that this was going to be commercial, and the city council chose to make it apartments. And these apartments are, by the way, next to single-family homes. There are no buffers of townhomes. It's just directly across Silver Hill. Drawing distinctions between this project and ours is difficult for me, and the reason for that is we've heard a lot about density. And if density really does matter, why was Calamar approved? If building height is a concern, why was a three-story apartment building in Calamar approved? If the issue is having multifamily next to single-family, why was Calamar approved? I'm not sure. I will say this, Calamar is age-restricted, meaning 55 and older. We applaud the project, and in fact, the mayor made note of it in her 2019 State of the City address. We think it's a great project, but we have hard time understanding why our project, which is very, very similar in less dense, is meeting so much opposition. The facts of this matter, and the facts that you should consider as a quasi-judicial body, are, and these are facts. This project meets the future land use guide. Fact. The staff and the Planning Commission have found that this project meets the golden criteria. We've revised our development plan. We've reduced our density by 13 units. Now to put that in perspective, that's between $200,000 and $250,000 a year in loss revenue. Now, that's not profit, that's loss revenue. Revenue goes to pay debt service. Revenue goes to pay maintenance. Revenue pays for the citizens to have good amenities in this project. The loss of 13 units is between $200,000 and $250,000 per year for the life of the project. We've tried to do more in buffering, using townhomes, so there are no apartment buildings facing or in direct sight of any of the surrounding neighbors, and we've realigned our north entrance. We've tried to do the things that you told us needed to be done. Our density is now 14.1 units per acre, or, in an apples-to-apples comparison, .02 units more than the improved Nichols Plan of 1996. Almost identical density that was approved by the city. All buildings are three stories or less. There's been a lot said, in fact, I heard on the news this morning, I was kind of startled, that all of our buildings are four-story. That's simply not true. Now, where there may be some confusion is we have two buildings along K7 where the grade drops very severely, so there's a walkout. But from Woodsonia Drive, the elevation is the same across the board, three stories or less. Fact. Traffic study shows no adverse impact. We can talk about the fear of traffic, but the traffic study doesn't bear that out. Public services and utilities are adequate for this area. That's a fact. That's what your staff is telling us. Schools have capacity for the development. Superintendent of Schools has told us that. That's a fact. Our project is very similar in many respects to Calamar, as I said just a moment ago, and per staff, all of our requirements of the city code and the zoning ordinances have been met. Those are facts. As impartial decision-makers tonight, you have got to separate fact from fiction. You've got to separate truth from speculation. You've got to separate reality from fear and make an informed, balanced judgment. This property has been designated by the city for multifamily development for 23 years, and Greg Preeb is offering a state-of-the-art project consistent with that designation, and he's asking for only one thing in return from the city: a building permit. No incentives, no goodies, no special favors, just a building permit. We believe we've addressed all of the issues that the council has given to us. We've done it in good faith, and I will say it at a substantial expense. We would ask for the same consideration you've given other projects of similar size and character in the city, and for your approval of this very meaningful development. Be happy to answer any questions, and again, happy holidays to each of you.
Any discussion from the council, the developer or staff? Thank you. Will I open it up for public comments? I want to go over the ground rules. If you'd like to speak, please raise your hand. I will call on you. Public comments are limited to five minutes. No one may speak more than twice to this item. Please do not speak over each other or over members of the governing body or staff. I will not allow any clapping, snapping, or other outbursts. That behavior is considered disruptive to the meeting. Failure to adhere to these rules and being disruptive to the meeting will result in your removal from the council chambers by a police officer. I expect everyone to be respectful and civil. I'd also like to mention that the minutes from the Planning Commission meeting, which is where the public hearing was held, as well as the very detailed staff report, were included in the last council packet, and the minutes of the last city council meeting were included in tonight's council packet. The governing body has had the opportunity to read those verbatim minutes, which included all of the comments and concerns from members of the public who provided testimony. The governing body has also had the opportunity to hear directly from many residents via email and phone calls, and has had time to read and respond to those concerns, many of which were the same as those provided at the Planning Commission's public hearing. Common concerns that we've all heard and addressed include density, traffic, schools, crime, stormwater, and property values. If anyone has any concerns outside of what was addressed in tonight's presentation, or what was included in the Planning Commission meetings and/or staff report, or emailed, or called, please raise your hand. For the sake of time, we want to get any new concerns addressed. Each person will have five minutes to make their comments, but please be as brief as possible. Is there anyone from the audience that would like to bring up any new concerns related to this project? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Dave Eber, 5105 Woodsonia Drive, Shawnee, Kansas. Couple of things. Can you get the overhead, please?
And I'm really not too sure what fundamental means, but fundamental is like changing from multifamily to single family. I- I- I'm sorry, I just don't know exactly what the Home Association wants, but it's clear from that message, they don't want to talk. So I believe we've tried to do everything in our power to communicate, modify our plan to make it more palatable. Uh, we've tried to compromise, and I think tonight we're ready for final disposition of this matter. I would like to make a couple of comments, though, about our role tonight. As a quasi judicial body, you have to consider the facts in this zoning decision. And before I get to our specific facts, I'd like to remind you of a couple of things. On four separate occasions, your professional planning staff has recommended a multifamily project for this land. Four separate occasions. On four separate occasions, your planning commission has recommended approval of a multifamily project, and has found specifically that the golden criteria have been met, and this use is consistent with the land use guide. On three prior occasions, this city council has approved multifamily projects for this property, and found compliance with the golden criteria, and found that multifamily use is consistent with the comprehensive plan as well as the future use plan. Since 1996, nothing has really changed. The land is still as it was in 1996, except our infrastructure has gotten better. Our ability to service our citizens has gotten better, all which would lead to maybe a higher density. But nothing has been done. Mr. Freed proposes a $50 million project on this site. He's going to have market rents of $1,200 to $1,500 per unit. He has suggested enhanced architecture I've never seen before, where you have two front elevations on townhomes, so that the backs appear to be fronts on Woodsonia Drive. We have over 50% open space on this property, and we have enhanced amenities, including a lake, a fishing lake, as well as a pool. But in addition to the history of our property, it's important to note what this city council has actually approved as recently as 2017. Mr. Sutman in his staff report pointed out a new development called Calamar, which is at 72nd and Silver Hill. That is two miles from this site on K7 on the east side. The plan was approved by this city council in 2017, and construction has started on a large three-story apartment building. The density of this- of this property is 17.5 units per acre. Our density is 14.1, which I'll get to in just a moment. The future land use guide said that this was going to be commercial, and the city council chose to make it apartments. And these apartments are, by the way, next to single-family homes. There are no buffers of townhomes, it's just directly across Silver Hill. Drawing distinctions between this project and ours is difficult for me. And the reason for that is we've heard a lot about density. And if density really does matter, why was Calamar approved? If building height is a concern, why was a three-story apartment building in Calamar approved? If the issue is having multifamily next to single-family, why was Calamar approved? I'm not sure. I will say this, Calamar is age restricted, meaning 55 and older. We applaud the project, and in fact, the mayor made note of it in her 2019 State of the City address. We think it's a great project, but we have hard time understanding why our project, which is very, very similar and less dense, is, uh, meeting so much opposition. The facts of this matter, and the facts that you should consider as a quasi judicial body, are, and these are facts. This project meets the future land use guide. Fact. The staff and the planning commission have found that this project meets the golden criteria. We revised our development plan, we've reduced our density by 13 units. Now, to put that in perspective, that's between $200,000 and $250,000 a year in loss revenue. Now, that's not profit, that's loss revenue. Revenue goes to pay debt service, revenue goes to pay maintenance. Revenue pays for the citizens to have good amenities in this project. The loss of 13 units is between $200,000 and $250,000 per year for the life of the project. We've tried to do more in buffering, using townhomes, so there are no apartment buildings facing or in direct sight of any of the, uh, surrounding neighbors. And we've realigned on North Entrance. We've tried to do the things that you told us needed to be done. Our density is now 14.1 units per acre, or, in an apples-to-apples comparison, .02 units more than the improved Nichols Plan of 1996. Almost identical density that was approved by the city. All buildings are three stories or less. There's been a lot said, in fact, I heard on the news this morning, I was kind of startled, that all of our buildings are four-story. That's simply not true. Now, where there may be some confusion is we have two buildings along K7 where the grade drops very severely. So there's a walkout. But from Woodsonia Drive, the elevation is the same across the board, three stories or less. Fact. Traffic study shows no adverse impact. We can talk about the fear of traffic, but the traffic study doesn't bear that out. Public services and utilities are adequate for this area, that's a fact, that's what your staff is telling us. Schools have capacity for the development, Superintendent of Schools has told us that, that's a fact. Our project is very similar, in many respects, to Calamar, as I said just a moment ago. And per staff, all of our requirements of the city code and the zoning ordinance- ordinances have been met. Those are facts. As impartial decision makers tonight, you have got to separate fact from fiction. You've got to separate truth from speculation. You've got to separate reality from fear, and make an informed, balanced judgment. This property has been designated by the city for multifamily development for 23 years. And Greg Freed is offering a state-of-the-art project, consistent with that designation. And he's asking for only one thing in return from the city: a building permit. No incentives, no goodies, no special favors, just a building permit. We believe we've addressed all of the issues that the council has, uh, given to us, we've done it in good faith, and I will say it at a substantial expense. We would ask, for the same consideration you've given other projects of similar size and character in the city, and for your approval of this very meaningful development. We'd be happy to answer any questions, and again, happy holidays to each of you.
Is there any discussion from the council of developer staff? Thank you. Will I open it up for public comments? I want to go over the ground rules. If you'd like to speak, please raise your hand, I will call on you. Public comments are limited to five minutes, no one may speak more than twice onto this item. Please do not speak over each other or over members of the governing body or staff. I will not allow any clapping, snapping, or other outbursts. That behavior is considered disruptive to the meeting. Failure to adhere to these rules and being disruptive to the meeting will result in your removal from the council chambers by a police officer. I expect everyone to be respectful and civil. I'd also like to mention that the minutes from the planning commission meeting, which is where the public hearing was held, as well as the very detailed staff report, were included in the last council packet, and the minutes of the last city council meeting were included in tonight's council packet. The governing body has had the opportunity to read those verbatim minutes, which included all of the comments and concerns from members of the public who provided testimony. The governing body has also had the opportunity to hear directly from many residents via email and phone calls, and has had time to read and respond to those concerns, many of which were the same as those provided at the planning commission's public hearing. Common concerns that we've all heard and addressed include density, traffic, schools, crime, stormwater, and property values. If anyone has any concerns outside of what was addressed in tonight's presentation, or what was included in the planning commission meetings and/or staff report, or emailed, or called, please raise your hand. For the sake of time, we want to get any new concerns addressed. Each person will have five minutes to make their comments, but please be as brief as possible. Is there anyone from the audience that would like to bring up any new concerns related to this project? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Dave Abner, 5105 Woodsonia Drive, Shawnee, Kansas. Couple of things. Can you get the overhead, please? A lot's just been mentioned about the Calamar project, which is roughly right in here, in this area. A lot of this land here has been designated in City Master Plan as medium-density housing. And if you pull up your Google Maps and you look at some of the houses that are bordering right in here, you get picture of it. That, that is not a single-family house, that's, looks to me like a triplex or a duplex. So, um, I actually don't believe that there's single-family housing bordering on Calamar itself. Some of- some of the area, to be fair, may indeed be single-family housing. I did not look at every single image, but I did take a drive-by there. Additionally, Calamar is at 17.5, um, units, but it's also designated as senior living. The city's master plan makes a distinction between senior living and, um, regular development houses. And actually, the 17.5 would be considered medium-density, according to the city's master plan, which basically sets the upper limit at medium-density at 21.78 units. That said, I appreciate the fact that the developers taken the time to address the concerns on the north end. I feel that if this project does go forward, my neighbors will at least be able to see the sun in the winter. Because part of the main problem with this, with this piece of land, and this isn't the developer's fault, it's just the way it is, is it happens to be the tallest piece of land in the whole neighborhood. If you, if you look at the 7.5-minute topographical map, basically, right here is the 850 line, and it goes downhill in one direction to 840, up to 860. Now, the problem is, is there's a stream that runs in through here, that basically makes all the land go down away from it. So, it's basically the tallest piece of land in the whole area. And the whole area is completely developed. Last, uh, session, Mr. Heaven made a very valid point, that if you put in a bunch of buildings there, that they will act as a noise barrier for Woodsonia. I can appreciate that, because I do get a fair amount of traffic noise from K7. The issue with the community, and this was going to not disrupt us, but it would disrupt the other side and change the character of it, is all that noise will bounce off the buildings and create a noise problem for everyone on the other side of K7. So, there's, there's a number of issues here, which relate to the fact that this is basically a mountain. Not really a mountain, but it is the tallest piece of land in, in the neighborhood. And we're talking about putting the tallest buildings on that piece of land. It will affect things such as, um, sightlines. And this will effectively become the new cityscape for the area. Everyone on the west side of K7 is going to look over, they'll see the buildings, then they'll see the water tower off in the distance, as opposed to the current, what they have now, which is a view of rolling subdivisions and various houses. It's, to be honest, I was supportive of Plan Number Two that was proposed for this area. I was supportive of Plan Number Three that went into this area, and I'd like to see something developed there, regardless of that. I'd just like to feel like we're not going to cause a lot of problems for various people in parts of the community that are related to noise, or just due to the fact that we're changing what everything looks like by putting tall buildings there.
Were at time, are you?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay.
So, again, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a merry Christmas.
You too. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Patrick Fitzgerald, 22613 West 53rd Place. First off, thank you, everybody, for spending this time with us at this, this point in the year. I know we have a lot of things we could be doing. Much like, much like Pete, uh, you know, I wish you guys all a happy holiday season, and, and thank you, everyone on this board that I, or on this committee that I've talked to in regards to this project. I'm proud of your service and what you do for this community. I, I, I heard Pete's comments, and I, I do have a couple of facts that I would like to share, and I'll sit down. I could talk for an hour about this, but most of you have listened to me for more than hours, so I won't, I won't go much longer than that. The first fact is just the way the comprehensive plan is set up, this land is classed as medium-density. It also says in the comprehensive plan, um, that benefit, uh, you know, benefit, if we deviate from the comprehensive plan, benefit should not be for a select few. Uh, it's my opinion that deviation from what is currently written in the comprehensive plan on Chapter Five, Page 10, where it says this land is specifically medium-density. If we deviate from that, I think we're benefiting, uh, the few. Next fact would be, uh, as we all know, there is a protest petition in place. I submitted signatures from 60% of the property owners who live within 200 feet of this development. I think that's a pretty good consensus as to what the feelings of the community is towards this. Uh, the city recognized 40%, which is double the minimum requirements. You guys are all elected officials, which is why you get to make this decision. So I, I would ask that you, uh, take consideration of, of what the people, uh, who are most impacted by this think. As far as previous plans, I do show three previous plans, I, I would be, I would be for any of those plans, at the density of 8.9, 8.2, and 7.2. This one comes in at a hair over 1,400, just like Pete said, which is 40% more than medium-density. So, um, with that being said, I, I appreciate your time, uh, and I hope that our elected officials do what, what I think, and, you know, the people who live within 200 feet think. Thank you very much, have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. Any other additional comments? Would please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Susan Carto, 5010 Woodsonia Drive. When Pete spoke a little while ago, he said he was speaking factually, and I'm going to repeat something that I think I, what he said, was that Freed's parent plan of 14.1 dwelling units per acre is less than one dwelling units per acre increase from Freed's prior plans. That is incorrect, because the J.C. Nichols Plan was 8.9, and then it decreased with Radwax 2002 Plan to 8.3, and then decreased again with Radwax Second Plan in 2004, 7.2. So I just wanted to point out that I don't think that was a factual statement. My only other concern that I have is that missed consequences, um, concern from the December 19th city council meeting, was the east-west traffic that most of the constituents brought up during the traffic study. And I haven't, haven't heard anything about any kind of east-west traffic study, that the traffic leaving 51st Street heading east towards Monticello and all that traffic, or the people that decide not to meander through, in front of the duplexes, or meander through the, in between the two apartment buildings, will, will option to come out 51st and head down a nice big wide street as Woodsonia Drive. So, I just wanted to reiterate that, that concern does not seem to be addressed this evening. Thank you all for your time, and I wish everyone a happy holiday.
You too. Anyone else like to comment on this item? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Marty Mothersbaugh, 22617 West 53rd Place. Thank you for the time, and, uh, I want to apologize, I'm not a public speaker, pretty nervous standing here, actually. But after I attended the December 9th meeting regarding this development or the proposal, uh, the more I sat and listened, the more I felt compelled to speak. There were a lot of things that were said by council members and the mayor, um, that I would like to address. Four things off the top of my head: traffic impact, compromise, developments in West Shawnee, and then a statement that was made by Mayor Disler. The first one I want to talk about is the traffic. December 9th meeting, it was stated the proposed plan would have little to no impact on neighborhood traffic. It was also stated, without citing a study or report, that the apartment residents take fewer trips when compared to single-family homes. I did quite a bit of research on that, and I couldn't find anything to support that. But I did find a study in, from 2017 by the Multifamily Housing Council, it's an advocacy group for apartment industry. Their study did note the number of vehicles for suburban, uh, developments is, is less than, I'm sorry, is more than with urban developments. But the no num- no numbers were separated. But, they said that the average units per, uh, vehicles per unit is 1.2. So if we go with 400-plus units, that brings us to over almost, over 500 vehicles making one trip daily if we take fewer trips. Uh, that is more than 1,000 additional vehicles on Woodsonia and neighboring streets. That's, I don't see how that can possibly have little to no impact on traffic. That doesn't include office staff, maintenance, grounds, crew, delivery drivers, utility vehicles, residents, guests, or anything like that. The roads might be able to handle the volume, but I live right on Woodsonia, and it's already dangerous. I don't let my children, who are teenagers, walk up and down that street, because cars drive fast. Cars drive recklessly on that street. Walkability should be, is one of my main concerns with this project. Um, school bus company, in fact, or the school buses won't even pick up kids on Woodsonia, they moved up to interior roads. So if the school buses think it's not safe already, 1,000 additional cars each day, that could pose a tremendous problem. The second thing I want to talk about was the compromise that was proposed. By removing the, the multi-level building and replacing with townhomes, it was actually said that, perhaps we could, to make up units, the developer could put a fifth story on that. I understand that's not part of the plan, but I feel like that's not here in the issue. Uh, the one common theme was density, the number of people, the number of units, the number of traffic. Uh, by, by compromising, both parties should give something, but what we were coming down to was developer was going to get to readjust things. That's, that's rearranging, that's not compromising, in my opinion. The proposed plan, now, because of the proposed plan, I now know the history of the land. I know the state, um, took some of the land to expand the highway. I know the remaining property, when building medium-density housing, is no longer as profitable as it once was, I understand that. But what I don't know is why that's the problem of the Woodsonia resident in the city of Shawnee. That's not our problem. We shouldn't be expected to compensate, uh, a, a business plan that went sideways. Uh, and the final thing, and perhaps the one that was most compelling to me, was you had shared a, a story of a resident that said they didn't want those people living in the community. I, I found that pretty appalling personally. Uh, I sold my first home in my late twenties and spent nearly a decade in medium-density housing. In April 2017, I purchased this home, and I was, so I was one of those people that they didn't want in that community, that bothered me. Um, over the past six months, I've had hundreds of conversations with dozens of my neighbors regarding this proposal. I've yet to hear anyone echo those sentiments. That is a minority, that is, that's individual. Of the many people who stood and spoke in opposition to this proposal on December 9th, not a single one mentioned anything that resembled those feelings. So I would like to ask the mayor, the council members, and everyone for that matter, to not hold such an obviously ignorant, hateful, intolerant, and prejudicial statement of one individual against an entire community. I worry that doing so would invalidate the legitimate arguments and concerns raised by the community. Went speaking in opposition to the proposed plan, and I genuinely hope that was not the purpose of putting that statement on record. I would like to close with this, during the December 9th meeting, I walked away feeling as though the council saw my community as opposing this development altogether. That is not the case. All we are asking is for the city to follow the plan of medium-density. Because if the plan is passed tonight, we will effectively, effectively be replacing the comprehensive plan for the plan of the developer. Thank you.
Thank you. And I want to thank you for your comments, and I do want to add that of all the developments that we've worked with, that your neighborhood, for the most part, has been the most respectful. I would absolutely add that. So it's unfortunate for this couple that felt otherwise, but, um, I would absolutely agree with you that the majority have been very respectful, so. Any other comments from the audience? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, yes, I don't have any prepared comments, but my name is Angela Steens, and I live at 5409 Aminda in Shawnee, Kansas, in Woodsonia. And I've lived there for 21 years, and I just want to echo some of the sentiments. I want to thank Patrick and some of the others that have been very outspoken and, and just very proactive in this development. And I don't necessarily have, I agree with what everyone else was saying about the medium-density, but I do have a major problem with the traffic. I agree with the gentleman that spoke previously. I don't allow my children to go down Woodsonia Drive without adults present, my husband or myself, or anyone else. I have a, I have older children, we've lived there for a long time, my children have attended the schools. I have younger children, a nine-year-old and an almost 11-year-old, and they want to go down to the park, but pre, quite frankly, I'm afraid to let them go down that, that drive. People speed through there, they also speed down our drive, which is Aminda. And to allow, I think that gentleman had a great, uh, uh, presentation about the 1,000 vehicles. We already have enough multifamily, um, uh, we have townhomes on the west side of K7. We also have them behind Casey's. We have apartments and villas just right down the road. I mean, I think we have a lot of multifamily units already. I'm not against Freed at all, he may be a great guy for all I know. But the point being that we have plenty of those developments out there in Case on, and West Shawnee. I'd like to see more restaurants and businesses. I've lived there for 21 years, for God's sake, let's get something else out there besides all these multifamily homes. We don't even have restaurants to feed these people. So, just in my opinion, just what I've seen, I think we need to do more planning and development. I'm sorry, but I think Lenexa has done a much better job at that than Shawnee. And I'd like to see us do some better planning and development out there, and not just these multifamily homes all the time. Nothing against them, I've lived in them myself, I've rented apartments. But I'd like to see something else, and families that are really invested in the community out there. Because we have a lot of great schools and a lot of great people. Thank you, and Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Merry Christmas. Any other comments from the audience? And just a reminder, we're looking for new comments, um, on issues that we haven't already heard. So if it's already been emailed or brought up at a previous meeting or anything, we've got that. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Dan Renault, and I live at 5408 Aminda Street. I just wanted to bring up a couple of things that took place at the last meeting, uh, that, uh, I think are important, important concepts. First of all, I want to thank you for your, for your, uh, work that you do, and Merry, and wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy Holiday. The last meeting, some person in here referred to you as judges. And I'm sorry, but it's been 50 years plus since I had basic training and, and education on civic, you know, this civic ability of towns, states, and, and of course, United States. You are elected officials. It's a very important job, and it's a thankless job, and I know it is. You work hard at what you do, but you're not judges. You're elected. I heard last week, or that last meeting, that people are looking for more rooftops, and more businesses, right? But as elected officials, you're elected by the citizens. You're not elected by businesses, whether it be Mr. Freed or McDonald's. You're elected by voters. And overwhelmingly, there's been a big push against this project, for all the reasons that've been talked about. And like we said already tonight, we were looking for a new traffic study that we didn't get. Traffic is going to be a problem. There's been 1,600 people plus petition against this idea. And I know that may not hold much water, but those are 1,600 people that are voters, and that should. And most of those voters And most of those vote, voters, most of those person, people that signed a petition are couples. And that should make twice the impact. This is an important project, and it has an important impact. Mr. Preid has talked about all, how nice things are and what it's going to be like and all this nice stuff. I worked for a major equipment manufacturer for 35 years. I worked with dealers with multi-million dollar facilities and businesses and multi, multi-million dollar complexes. I have watched dealers go out of business when the main person either has health troubles or gets in an accident and dies because of lack of succession plan. The boys take over, whatever, and within three years, they're out of business and destroys that entire business for the community. I guess I'd like to know, but if you asked, have you asked what kind of succession plan he has? What are his plans? What if he decides to sell this in 10 years? How's that going to affect us? He talks about all this wonderful stuff he plans to do and he's gonna do, but if he sells it, that's a new contract and different person making those decisions. I just want you to think about that just a little bit, cause that can have a very serious impact. My last statement. I told you last time I was here that I've been here for over 23 years and I've watched this area grow, and it was good for it to grow, and I welcome growth. But I think we need to take a real strong look, as somebody just mentioned, at the entire plan of Western Shawnee and how we can develop it the best for everyone, business and homeowners. I think that's truly important. We don't want to end up with a mess. If we build too fast, if we grow too fast, you're going to end up with a mess that could bankrupt homeowners and possibly bankrupt the city. With that, again, I thank you for your time. Happy holidays. Drive safely.
Thank you. Anyone else from the audience have any new information or comments to share? Okay, seeing none, um, I want to address a few things that we had heard since the last meeting. Um, if Mr. Allman could come forward. Uh, regarding the density, um, I am a very visual person, so I asked him to put the map of what was proposed in 1996 of the previous project and then the current, because the land area itself has not changed, but we've had to remove the KDOT section, the fire station section, there's a section that cannot be, um, developed as residential now, and all of that is subtracted, so that is why, so if we were still using the apples-to-apples, the same land area, so the red area and the green area have now all been subtracted. We have the Kinder Care, we have the red where the fire station is, the red where the KDOT is. This green area next to the Kinder Care can now not be residential, but if we were still counting this full piece of property like we were in 1996, it's actually 9.45 units per acre.
You, you asked, and it was brought up to try to compare this to the original density type developments that were in the eights. And so what we did was just try to look at the four-corner analysis of this, comparing the actual land area to what those Rod Rock plans were. And you're correct, you can see from that graph that this development site, including the little piece next to the fire station, is about 29.2 acres in size. That's what they're proposing to develop now. But in reality, if you compare it to the Rod Rock project, um, and, and the 1996 project, there was approximately 7.58 acres taken away from right-of-way that will never be developed for residential uses. Those are going to be highway right-of-way or under the highway, actually, in some cases from, from now on. Uh, the fire station was obviously acquired at 1.46 acres. Uh, there was some right-of-way for 56th Street, uh, excuse me, 53rd Street dedicated when the fire straight, station was constructed. And then if you looked to the south of that, that Rod Rock plan, uh, had multifamily attached townhomes all the way down to Johnson Drive. That acreage is now going to be developed with a Kinder Care and a, actually some other sort of more likely office use. Uh, that vacant area to the north in combination with that is around, um, 2.9 acres for the remaining undeveloped and then 2.27 acres for the, the Kinder Care site. So adding that all together takes you back to that approximately 44 acres, 43.69 acres. And with the reductions that they made by taking the apartment building out, if you divide that 413 by the, what I would call the parent parcel, or it would have been the Rod Rock site, that, that gets you down around 9.5, 4.5 acres in terms of residential dwelling units as an acre-to-acre comparison.
Okay.
Would that clarify things?
Yes. I'm a very visual person, so while we were talking about these subtractions before, this helped me, um, to understand it very much so. So thank you so much for putting this together. Um, yes, Mr. Neighbor?
Mr. Allman. Doug, real quick, there was something in the packet that talked about trail to Garrett Park from this area or making it more accessible.
There's a connection. Uh, we do it not just in this neighborhood, but whenever there's, uh, the ability or the lack of want for people to actually walk on unimproved roads, we try to do trail connections. Your parking director's really done a good job of analyzing even school sites and those kind of things. And so, yes, if you look in the, the actual packet memo that was put together, there's a, an improved bridge that you could walk, I believe, from the sidewalk through this neighborhood to the north and get to that park, so that someone would not have to necessarily walk along Silver Hill to get to that park. It's connecting pedestrian connectivity piece that we try to do, not just here, but all over town.
And then that too takes us to the medium density, right? If we're looking at the full acreage to apples-to-apples, 9.45 meters per acre.
Being that there's not going to be residential developed south of 53rd now, being that there's not going to be residential developed in those red areas that were taken by either fire, public safety use or the right-of-way, uh, medium density would be defined as up to 10 dwelling units per acre.
Okay. Thank you. Um, yeah, Mr. Jenkins?
I understand the arguments that's being put forth, trying to make this density affordable, but I have a very basic disagreement with these examples. I ride a bus every day and it's a 60-passenger bus. And I get on the bus and we get up to about 60 people on that bus, but we all got a seat. Everything's cool, we drive on, we go to work or whatever we're doing. And then, uh, the transit authority says, well, we're not going to give you a 60-passenger bus anymore, we're going to give you a 45-passenger bus. We should have 60 passengers. And you're standing there holding the strap and you're looking at the guy and he says, no, it's kind of dense in here. And I think that's the point we're missing here. You don't automatically, you know, when, when the size of the developable space gets constrained and brought down, then guess what? You're going to have to have a little less units in there to keep that same sort of density. It doesn't equate. That isn't, that's mixing apples and oranges there, guys, and I don't, I don't like that, that comparison at all. You're going to have to now put in taller buildings because we've got to pack more people into less space. And therein lies the problem. That's the one that everybody's having the problem with and having to push back about. It seems really simple to me. This is like basic math. And everybody keeps trying to throw out different figures and manipulate the numbers and screw it around a little bit so it looks better, but it, it isn't better. It may look better if you look at a table or an Excel sheet or whatever, it may look better, but in reality, you've got to pack more stuff into less space, basically, and therefore we get these bigger buildings, and that's what's causing the problem here that people are concerned about. And I have those same concerns, because everybody says it meets the golden rule test. No, it doesn't. It negatively affects the neighborhood, the character of the neighborhood. That's a very important aspect that's considered in the golden rule. And, you know, I, I don't have the knowledge to sit here and address traffic and all that kind of stuff. I have to kind of accept some numbers that are provided to me, but, yeah, I guess I just fell off the turnip truck, but a thousand more cars does seem like a little more traffic to me. Uh, the fact that people, I don't know what it is with Shawnee, but we seem to have an issue with traffic everywhere. When I'm out walking the door-to-door, one of the most frequent concerns that expressly by our neighbors all throughout the community are, people traffic in this neighborhood 40, 45 miles an hour, can you guys dream about this? And boy, I hear that a lot. And I'm going like, wow, you know, I know it's a problem and it makes me very concerned for the safety of their children and the safety of themselves, frankly, and the vehicles and so on. Um, and I think that's an area we could probably improve on as a community, focusing these areas a little more tightly, but we dropped some of these speeds down. Cause I've, I live in Flemwood, and that's not exactly a racetrack. In fact, there's no way out that end down there, but people are losing by about 40 miles an hour, or probably closer to 25. So, you know, your concerns are validated with me, cause I, I deal with it every day as I go about Shawnee. But I can't really say if the, the number's wrong. Does the roads and so on still handle the traffic? Maybe so. I mean, that's, I'm not going to sit here and argue that. Handle it? Well, there's a lot of degrees of handling it, you know? I mean, we can handle it and be packed in like sardine, or we can handle it and be a little comfortable and a little safer. Uh, well, there's a lot of questions here, but my biggest question, my biggest concern that has not been addressed, and I was hoping maybe something would come out of the, the meetings that took place since the last council hearing, and that was on the density issue. And it really seems like there's been absolutely zero progress on that issue. Okay? And I'm not, I'm not really speaking badly of Preid and his development. I think they're all a bunch of great guys. I've talked to, uh, Mr. Heaven, and he's a great guy. I mean, I really like him, he's a real perfect guy. I haven't met Mr. Preid yet, although he volunteered to speak to me anytime I wanted to, so I appreciate that. But, you know, I've received many, many emails on this subject, on this pick for development. And they've kind of been different than the emails I've got on a lot of other subjects that have been brought before this council. And the way they've really differentiated from what I normally get, uh, from people is that they weren't highly emotionally charged, they weren't, screw you guys, we want this change. They weren't, they were very well thought out. And people spent a lot of time analyzing this problem and providing information and data to me. And I read all of them. I'm trying to answer all you guys back, but I did read them all, one by one, and I digested them as carefully as I could. And it's still left me with this underlying concern, that the density is too great. And I think the one gentleman, you know, it, it is important that we, that the people have a say-so in this. And I do, that can't be the only consideration, I understand that. That's the way the legal process works. The developer has rights as well as the residents have rights. But I do feel that it certainly is something to take into consideration, it's a significant consideration. And when you have this monolithic opposition as opposed to fractured opposition, like, yeah, I like this project, oh, I hate it, I like it, I mean, but we're not getting that, it's all, I hate it. So that's kind of an unusual bent too. But we're having such a steadfast, uh, front here that says, no, we don't, we don't want this impacting our neighborhood. And, uh, well, it has quite an impact on me, cause, um, something keeps bothering me, something about buying for the people or something like that, that, that gives me a lot of concern. And, uh, you know, you're not even my ward, guys, but, um, you are people, you are Shawnee. So, um, that's all I got to say, thank you.
Councilmember Zimmerman, I'm in Councilmember Sandifer.
Like everybody else up here, um, I did take a special interest in this. We all read the same letters, and there's been a lot of conversation about, um, density, the word density. So I sat down, I spent a considerable amount of time looking at that, considering on full screen. So, um, a footnote to y'all, um, I'm an engineer. I apologize for, right now, for what you're going to see, but this is how we think, and my wife laughed at me when I showed her this. So this is Rod Rock Community, this is, uh, everybody I've listened to said that this is acceptable at 7.2 units per acre. 111 townhomes, 314 units, 252 bedrooms, 64 three-bedroom, that's 692 bedrooms, 695 residents, at this slide. I put it on its side just so that we could get a better view of it. Those are three exits from the Rod Rock Community. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna debate number of cars or anything like that, I'm just gonna say 695 residents, that's their points of ingress and egress. Next slide. So we all talked about this, we had 1.7 acres on the north end that had to be configured to serve as a detention base. And so, next slide, we're going to take those four buildings and we're going to move them inside. We're going to have 42 acres. We still have 111 townhomes, 7.5 units per acre. We just stacked these houses in green, I just made two-story units out of them for the sake of argument. We still have 695 residents, we still have three points of ingress and egress for 695 residents. Next slide, please. Over on the right side, we've talked about, it's actually 5.2 acres for the fire station, some rezonings, some commercial, all that's moved around, so we took, next slide, those units, I just stacked them on as two-stores, as you see, I could put them anywhere, I just conveniently put them there. We located 17 townhomes, we now have two points of ingress and egress for 695 residents. There's a misprint there. Next slide, please. And here we are, this is the big right-of-way issue, 7.6 acres, it now in bridges on, uh, all the units in red. Next slide, take those units, 22 stories, 16 townhomes, 54 units. We still have 314 units, 692 bedrooms, 695 residents, we're up to 10.8, 10.8 units per acre. So our density is going up, but the traffic hasn't changed. Number of residents hasn't changed. So I'm going to try and improve this. Next slide, please. Mr. Preid came in and he consolidated the, the townhomes, stacked them on top to clean things up, and he reduced, uh, the total number of structures from 111 to 30. And to attract more single residents, he increased their number of one-bedroom units to 145. Next slide, please. To enhance his value proposition, he increased, uh, added a whole bunch of amenities to attract higher tenants, we have some cool green spaces, um, clubhouse, so on and so forth. We've talked about the, the wrought iron fence in the back. Next slide, please. He's rethought the access points to and from Johnson Drive. Um, next slide, please. Added some quality three-bedroom units on the, what is that, the east side to attract Lockenleaf senior citizens. And I talked to a lot of Lockenleaf senior citizens who were living in homes. When I was walking, they were looking for, uh, a place to live where they could park their lawn there forever, never do anything more with maintenance, they wanted to travel. Next slide, please. The traffic pattern was, was changed dramatically. Um, about, actually, we're going to have fewer number of residents when we see this, but we have that big red arrow on the right-hand side, we have much better access to Johnson Drive and on to K-7. Next slide, please. And we compare what happens when we consolidated Rod Rock to what we did after Preid massaged it, or scratched into 29.2 acres, we've gone from 100, 111 structures to 31. 313 units with 692 bedrooms to 413 units with 732 bedrooms. With that bedroom count, the disposition of the unit because of all the one-bedroom units, we've actually gone down in the total number of residents. We have better amenities, more green space, we have a target market of young professionals, Lockenleaf seniors. We've gone from 10.8 units per acre, which is acceptable to everybody, to 14.1 units per acre, but we have a, what strikes me as a better development. Next slide, please. Everybody talked about traffic noise, I'm not going to beat this up, that's, you've got a line of sight that goes downhill from, from the, uh, K-7 where it's the overpass. I actually drove out today to listen to you, see if I could hear traffic, I could. Next slide, please. We put in a three-story apartment building, it's going to drive the noise back on the highway, I'm not going to belabor this. Next slide, please. Here's, here's where I'm going. Casualty of toll run and ten to consequences. Everybody's hung up on density and apartments, giving key elements of resistance here. Today, we're going to vote, and what we vote today is the potential of limiting future development. Lower unit-per-acre density, single-story townhomes. Let's do the math, 10 units per acre on 29.2 acres. If I'm the developer, I'm going to put in three-bedroom units. You can do the math, I'm putting 720 occupants, residents in that same space. There'll be no amenities, cause they don't have any space, cause I have so many of these townhomes in there. And I'm not going to be attracted to young professionals or Lockenleaf senior anymore. I just, be careful what you ask for. I sat on the, the vote of zoning appeals for 10 years. My favorite story- My favorite story that they used to tell me when I started was, they had a gentleman that wanted to put a retaining wall along the sidewalk. And Board of Zoning Appeals mails all of the neighbors, a little letter says, "Hey, somebody's gonna do something a little bit different. They're gonna put a retaining wall up, it's gonna go right along the sidewalk, that's really against the rules of the zoning. What do you, you think about that?" And the neighbor said, "No, we don't want, we don't want them to do that." So, we had to reject it. So, he couldn't put his flower garden where he wanted to put his flower garden, but he couldn't put the retaining wall up. So, he put a flower garden in anyway. He took an old toilet, he put it out in his front yard, he made a flower out of it. Then he took some box springs, flipped it upside down, and put planted plants in it. I'm, I'm not saying that Pre would do anything like that, but I just want you to, you know, be aware of these unintended consequences. I'm done.
Mr. Sandifer.
Yeah, I've been listening to everybody for, for quite a while, and as of actual complaints, I, I had three complaints this time, and they were all from Ward 3 and then Ward 4. Uh, you know, I, I hear people wanting restaurants, okay? Without more people, you're not gonna have restaurants. It's, it's not gonna happen. They need a breakfast and a lunch, or at least a lunch and a dinner, one of the two, or they can't have it. They can't stay in business. You, you know, there've been several projects came about, or tried to come about on this piece of ground. And with topography and difficulty and, and financing, you have to, you have to be able to make a certain amount of money to pay it back. If you get the density too, too low, you can't make enough money to pay the banks back. As Mr. Zimmerman says, you know, be careful what you ask for here, because one of these days, maybe you guys will have some children that you, that can't afford a house, and they may want to live close to you. And they're gonna be put into another type of, or have, have to go to a different type of apartment that you may not want them in. So, they end up having to go 15 miles away, 10 miles away to find a unit available that would fit what they need. You know, we need some good apartments in this, in the city. We need more people in here to get the good restaurants. It's very difficult to find a developer. You can't, you cannot dictate to a developer how much money you're gonna spend, because he only has a certain amount that he's able to get per project. You, you narrow the project down too much, you can't get the money. And there's a lot of you in here that probably already know that, and they're trying to get it narrowed down to where he can't even, nobody can build on this property. So, you have to make it, you can't, if you guys own this piece of property and you came to us and said, "I wanna put apartments on here," and the comprehensive plan says yes, everything says yes, and we tell you, "No, the people don't want it." You know, what would you say to the city? I mean, you, you, we can't dictate to somebody if the plan fits and it fits all the, the rules. We have to work with them in order to get the best that we can get. Now, if you wanna run off the best ones, you know, down the road, you don't know what you're gonna get. And that shows in other cities, and it shows in other areas of the city. As, as was told, be, be careful what you ask for here. You've got a good quality deal, the man sat down and worked with you for the last two weeks here to put together a different plan, cut his profits back where he's gonna lose more money because of it. In order to keep good quality apartments, you have to keep a certain amount of, of debt. If, if you keep, get it too cheap, you're gonna end up with cheap apartments. We don't want that. So, you know, I, I think the man has been over backwards here in the last couple of weeks, in order to get a project in the city and to take up a piece of property that we think's very difficult to deal with. So, you know, it's back like I've, I've said, told people before, you know, if you don't want something built on a piece of property, you guys need to pull your money and buy it. Then nobody can build on it. But if somebody else buys it, you know, it's very difficult to tell them you can't build on it. We have to work with them to see what we can do. So, all we're asking, you know, work with it, you know, a little bit here. And Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays.
Councilmember Constance, excuse me. I just wanted to clarify on the comment regarding the traffic and that we do have it in here for it six months, and then also at one year to review the traffic. Could we talk, have someone share a little bit about what that will look like for the concerns on the east-west traffic? And if we find it to be a problem, what might be done?
City Manager, Transportation Manager. So, yes, we did talk about, uh, we're further than is concerned on some of the potential traffic issues that they are concerned about on 51st and 53rd. So, yes, we would look, we would, uh, collect basically traffic counts prior to the development going in and going back and looking, um, at traffic count after the fact, about six months and a year. See what kind of changes we've had, and look at some potential, um, countermeasures if we see issues.
Okay. And so, we can have that on a rec, on the record.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
And I, as far as traffic, too, I, I wanna add, um, this is your area of specialty and expertise, and, um, during my time, never have you approved a traffic study that we have found, that came back later that was wrong or inadequate or, um, so with that being said, I trust you. I trust what you tell me when you tell me something is, um, what it is, because so far you have not led me astray in that. Um, but just kinda like with the map, I am a very visual person, so I personally, um, made some field trips, uh, as I've been getting this feedback from residents, and one of them was to what I had mentioned last time, the thousands of apartments on 75th Street. When I sat there and I watched people coming and going during the peak hours in the morning and the evening, never once did I see more than three cars exiting at a time. Never once during the morning or the afternoon peak. So, I think when we're thinking 400 cars, we're thinking the exodus of the Chiefs game or a Royals game or a, um, play performance where every, you know, theater in the park where everybody's trying to exit at once. Um, so I watched that. I spent the morning, uh, before my eye doctor appointment, driving up and down with Sonia from 7:30 to 8:00 a.m. I was met by 10 cars. I sat at the Greens, and there I never saw more than three cars exiting at a time. And as you sit there, and if you count, one Mississippi, two Mississippi, three, after they exit, they're, they're without, they're out of sight in less than five seconds. And, and we're looking at three cars at a time. So, then today, I went over to the Walmart over there, the entire parking lot was full. I assume this is like a busy shopping day. The entire parking lot is full, and I sit there and I watch the parking lot, and never, during that entire time I sat there, did I see more than three cars exit the parking lot at a time. There's, three seems to be a magic number. Maybe sometime there's four cars, I don't know. But the point being, I think, and that's why I said I'm a visual person, so even though I, I trust you and you have all the fancy math that you do to tell us this is gonna work, I went and watched these different things so that, just like with the map that I asked Mr. Allman to come up with, and watched what happened. I watched the reality. I watched what it is, and so you're not having all of these cars at a time. So, if there is a curve in the road, you don't have 400 cars taking that curve at one time. It's one car at a time. You might have three or four at a time. Um, so, I, I just wanna add that about the traffic as well. So, I fully trust you, but I have no problem with us reviewing it, because I do fully trust you, and I don't see that there would be a problem. Um, I wanna go back to the, the density for a second, too. Uh, we heard the comments, um, all through the imaginary sessions, we heard it again tonight. We want restaurants, we want retail, we want destination points. Well, before this project ever even came before us, we are told on a regular basis, as we are meeting with developers, the reason Western Shawnee is so slow to grow is because you don't have the density. You don't have the density Lenexa has. You don't have the density out there. You don't have the density. That's all we hear, is that they are not going to bring their businesses to a place that does not have the traffic to support it, um, as far as people going to their business. I mean, and we've all seen the restaurants turnover in that area of Shawnee. Um, Ruby Tuesdays and Sabreos has been a few different restaurants, and, um, we've seen them turnover. They struggled to survive because they didn't have enough people attending there. So, we keep hearing, we want these things, but we don't want the density that they tell us is required to get those things. And something that needs to be considered is, just since the last meeting, I have been personally contacted by two developers, and I know a chamber has been contacted, and I believe the city manager has as well. Um, if, if this isn't approved, it's not just this development that is impacted. We have been flat-out told, um, me personally, by two developers, if this does not go through, we are not bringing our development to Western Shawnee. Period. So, that's, you can't say we want these things, but then we don't. Um, the schools, again, kept, heard some more about the schools. And again, the superintendent has said they have more than enough room at the schools. They actually support this project. They think this project would be good. Um, the one thing that I hadn't considered before that was brought to my attention with the schools is that those students that happen to find themselves in the middle of a divorce and want to stay in their school, but the parent, whichever parent can no longer afford the home in the school district, something like this would allow them to stay. Um, we received additional information. Someone had sent a, a link on crime, and, um, of course, so everything that we receive from you, we research and we look at. And we had received the link, and it, um, our, so our deputy police chief and our crime analyst, uh, looked at that. The data on that link does not match our data at all, and our data is the data that is taken in as crimes are happening, so ours is legitimate. Um, it, it appears theirs comes from a real estate, um, place is where they're getting their, uh, their numbers from, but it does not match our data. And I think the rest of the things that we, um, addressed last time, but those were the things that I had continued to hear more about. So, we did look further into those things. Um, and then also, as far as what Mr. Heaven meant about being a judge, is that, uh, when we make our decisions, we have to make our decisions based on the facts that are presented to us like a judge does. We cannot, um, take emotion or feelings or any of that when we are making our decisions. They have to be based on facts. So, I think that is what he was referring to when he meant that the decision we made, I have to potentially, if it doesn't pass, stand before a judge and explain why we did not think this was a good fit for our city. And when all of our studies and all of our plans and all of our information tells us it is, how do we stand before them and say that it's not? So, um, Mr. Neighbor.
Yeah, I, most of my thunder's been stolen by now. Uh, I just wanna say, I think this is a very good project. Um, you know, Mr. Pre has a good reputation, as I suggested last time, he's building 384 houses, or so just on the other side of K-7. Um, you know, typically, uh, when you build projects, usually, uh, what you see is the best you're gonna get, and if the project doesn't build in, doesn't get approved at that point, then the next step, it, the next project probably is not gonna be quite as good. You know, 'cause there's nothing, Mr. Pre's been in there for quite some time. He's spent a lot of money at it, trying to promote it. Uh, he owns the ground, and, and, you know, it's his ground. He can do whatever he wants. He can sell it to somebody else, and he's gonna bring something in there. They're gonna bring in, try and bring in a strip mall or something like that, when you don't have enough people in there to keep the people in the strip mall just south of there open, 'cause there are always places for rent. Um, so, and, and, and again, if something else comes in and say the result turns in townhomes, again, you people, it is your choice. You could turn around and, and, uh, you could vote it down again, and this whole process would go through again. Again, I would say, there are no incentives for this. When this is built out, I think in something like 24 months, uh, the, the state tax for the city is gonna be the neighborhood of $155,000 a year. Now, that might not sound like much, but after a while, it does build up. But there are things on the horizon around here which those of us that sit up here, I mean, in city government are very aware of. One of the things is a black box theory, which as far as, um, how large stores, Walmart and things, how their assessed valuation is, and depending how that goes, that could be a huge impact on the city as far as revenues and services. And what happens then, if we're faced with having to make a decision for services, you know, something's gonna give if we can't pay for it. I remember back in, and Mickey does in 2008, '09, and '10, we didn't have the money to do milling over labor roads for two years. We were just trying to do basic services. So, do you want seven policemen on the road, 24/7, 365? Or do you only want four? Or do you want some, or do you want, you want not to have a fire station and not have the fire, you know, the longer? No, we don't want that. That's not what we've worked up here and strived for all these years. Now, uh, but the other thing about, you know, restaurants and shopping, I, I went out to a ribbon-cutting the other day at Keller Williams out west, and the principal out there said, he's got 75 realtors agents, he wants 150. He says, "We are very much for Western Shawnee, and we're very much for multifamily, because when you have multifamily, people look, become familiar with the neighborhood, they're the ones that are gonna buy the houses usually within a mile and a half and so where they live." So, um, and, and the other thing, if it doesn't go through tonight, well, in the next two or three months, there's gonna be this strategic plan for Shawnee, which is gonna be suddenly, everybody's gonna put it, this is gonna be our 10-year plan for our city. Somewhere in there is gonna be something that talks about affordable housing. Now, I just watched six new policemen get sworn in the other day, and I don't believe at their salary, any of them can afford to live in Shawnee, nor can our new fire, new people on the fire department. So, when you say affordable housing, and that's one of the things in the strategic plan, that we won't put up multifamily housing or something to give them a place to live, that doesn't balance, it's sort of hypocritical. And the people that notice that are the developers all over the area, and I'll echo what Mayor just said about these two projects. I heard that, heard today that one of those, if, if this does not pass, that one person is gonna pull a large, another large multifamily project in Western Shawnee. It takes folks, it takes rooftops, it takes people, and it works. You know, you know, you talk about density, don't look at what, I hate to bring it up. Don't look what Lenexa's done. They got density down there in some places that are over 20, 20 people, and look what they have been able to do with it. Now, if we, if we want Shawnee to sit here and be a bedroom community forever, that's fine. But if you wanted to go and get the amenities and things and everything you want going forward, you know, we're, we're gonna need to have more rooftop, multifamily's a way to do it. And the other thing I would say, after being, sitting up here for almost 10 years, I hear what you're saying. I truly do. I've heard it before, and my experience is that it usually works out for the best. So, um, that being said, I'd say my piece.
And to your point, too, um, just, when I was a kid, in Shawnee, uh, population was 15,000. And I don't know of any development in Shawnee that was not opposed, including the Woodsonia Homes. There was opposition at the time they were built, because at that time, in that area, they wanted to keep, um, large lots with horses, the farms, their views, and all of that. So, um, we've gone from 15,000 to 67,000. We're still not at full buildout, but if, at one point, there was, every development was opposed. Um, and then, wanna talk about another example I thought about with, uh, traffic besides the Chiefs or Royals stadiums is a school. You drop your kids off or pick them up before or after school, that's where you see a line of traffic that you can't, uh, get around, and they don't come out of apartment complexes or townhomes like they are lining up to pick up kids from school, so. Any other council comments or?
Okay. If there's no further discussion, um, the recommended action is consider passing ordinance number 3309. Given seven votes are required for passage. I will accept a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion has been made and seconded on this item. I'll do a roll call vote. Remember, seven votes are required for passage. Councilmember Zimmerman?
Aye.
Councilmember Neighbor?
Aye.
Councilmember Jenkins?
Nay.
Councilmember Kimery?
Nay.
Councilmember Meyer?
No.
Councilmember Larson-Benau?
Aye.
Councilmember Sandifer?
Yes.
Councilmember Constance?
Yes.
Motion fails. No applauding. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is council committee meeting from December 9th, 2019, chaired by Councilmember Meyer.
Okay. Item one is to consider ordinance number 3310, amendment chapter 9.04 of the Shawnee Municipal Code related to false alarms. Ordinance number 3311 revising- Ordinance number 3311, revising various sections of the Shawnee Municipal Code related to user fees and revisions to various policy statements in an effort to establish a comprehensive user fee schedule. The council committee recommended 7 to 0 that the governing body approve comprehensive user fee schedules.
There are five recommended actions to consider. The first recommended action, consider passing ordinance number 3310 related to false alarms. Does anyone on the council have any questions? Anyone from the audience like to speak to this item? I'll accept a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion has been made and seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose nay. Motion passes. Second recommended action is consider passing ordinance number 3311 related to user fees. Does anyone on the council have any questions? Anyone from the audience like to speak to this item? I'll accept a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion has been made and seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose nay. Motion passes. Third recommended action is consider approving revisions, policy statements numbers 5, 12, 15, 21, 27, 30, 31, 35, 45, 49, 50, 59, 60, 61, 63, 64, related to removing reference user fees. Does anyone on the council have any questions? Anyone from the audience like to speak to this item? Accept a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion has been made and seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose nay. Motion passes. Fourth recommended action is consider approving repeal of policy statement number 62. Does anyone on the council have any questions? Anyone from the audience like to speak to this item? I'll accept a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion has been made and seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose nay. Motion passes. Final recommended action is consider approving revisions, policy statement number 56, approving the comprehensive user fee schedule. Does anyone on the council have any questions? Anyone from the audience like to speak to this item? I'll accept a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion has been made and seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose nay. Motion passes. Councilmember Meyer?
Item number two is to consider, consider passing ordinance number 3312, amending chapter 50, 5.51 of the Shawnee Municipal Code. The council committee recommended 7 to 0 that the governing body approve the amendments establishing regulations for locations of electronic cigarette establishments.
Recommended action is consider passing ordinance number 3312. Does anyone on the council have any questions? Anyone from the audience like to speak to this item? Seeing no, I'll accept a motion. Oh, sorry. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Merry Christmas, happy Hanukkah. My name's Tony Gillett, 21613 West 60th Terrace, here in Shawnee. I'll make this real brief regarding this ordinances in a lame duck session. This is just more government regulation. Ordances and top of ordinances, a lame duck session like this, when will governments ever end? The rights of the people, when you're 18 years old, you could go to war, but you can't drink, you can't smoke. When, when will we ever get around to limited government? Limited government. Limited government. That's all I had to say. Thank you for your service. No questions.
Anyone else from the audience like to speak to this item? Seeing no, I'll accept a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion has been made and seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay.
Nay.
Motion passes with Councilmember Kimling in dissent. Councilmember Meyer?
Okay. Okay. Item number three is to consider passing ordinance number 3313, amending chapter 9.01 of the Shawnee Municipal Code to regulate the age to purchase, possession, and sale of tobacco products. The council committee recommended 6 to 1 to forward a tobacco 21 ordinance to the governing body for consideration.
Recommended action is consider passing ordinance number 3313. Does anyone on the council have any questions?
Yes.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yeah, I have a couple of concerns here. One, I think everybody up here on this bias is ready with the fact that the president just signed the budget bill, which does address this subject in there, and there's going to be information forthcoming on that as time goes on. It sounds like a lot of the responsibility for enforcing that may come down to state and local level, and that's fine. But I'd sure like to see what they at least come out with. I'd like to see the final result before we move on. It should be a few months, but a few months is not a big deal. And in any event, if we can't agree with that, we do have a business here in Shawnee that we had talked to about trying to either exempt that business, grandfather that business or whatever. We're hoping to see that in the ordinance we're going to be talking about approving tonight, and it's not in there. And I would like to give it time to go back to the drawing board to make sure we have that in there, at least protect that individual and his, and his business before we move forward with the finalization of the ordinance. So, we'd move to table until then.
Any other comments from the council? Mrs. Larson Benau?
I do have comments related directly to that, but you have a motion to table on the floor.
I am not accepting motions yet, because we're still in discussion.
Fair enough. I, I am fully in my authority here. I'm going to take full responsibility for this. I was in communications with the staff about drafting both a straight tobacco 21 ordinance as well as an ordinance that included a grandfathering language for the business that Mr. Jenkins mentioned. And I would like the council to consider that the hookah bar would be grandfathered in with some specific stipulations. One stipulation is that they would not be able to sell any tobacco products that leave their premises to anyone, that is, actually, to anyone, so that no more tobacco leaving their premises.
From 18 to 21, I take it?
We, in my conversations with Mr. Monslo, he is willing to cede all retail sales. So, ceding retail sales, as well as if the business changes ownership, it is no longer grandfathered in. If it changes, if it, yeah, it closes and a new hookah bar were to open, that also would not be grandfathered in. And then there was another stipulation that I requested. And as I said, I was in communications with staff. I prefer not to do this kind of amendment from the bias, but be that as it may, I would ask the council to consider that grandfathering language.
So, before I ask anyone from the audience to speak to this item, I want to ask staff if, I mean, because I, I don't think we would want to approve anything without any official legal language written, right? So, do we want to take this back to committee?
We, we have some potential language that we think we may be able to work with. I think the city attorney is comfortable with it, or Lisa DeHahn, he's also been working on it as well, so.
But would we be approving it without knowing what that language is?
Unless we can put it up on a screen, I'm kind of uncomfortable with that. And I don't know if Lisa's wrote down some language that we can have written out.
Yeah, we can.
And I apologize to you, we were communicating with Lisa, and there's two Lisas in the room, and Lisa also has an email address that I understand went down. And so, she's not received any communications on this today, so.
I, no, I just did, just, I talked to her, we kind of knew if you have this communication and, then, I don't know.
Is Stephen habit? We've done that in the past, where we, we try and discuss something, and unless we have it in a written form, I'm uncomfortable dealing with. I think that's one of the reasons why we got in this position to begin with, because we, we thought we had one thing decided at the committee level and then you had an addition to it apparently, and it didn't get clearly communicated. If it's going to be passed tonight, then Lisa's been written form about it.
Sorry, I got a little confused right now.
Stephen will, Stephen will go to that.
And the other thing, while we're talking about that, rather than an individual business, can, can we talk about doing something in terms of this business license at this location and that exemption would apply to that business license? And so, once that license is surrendered and that business no longer operates and that exemption would no longer apply, is that what you're talking about doing?
One moment, I'm consulting my notes. These are my notes based on my conversation with Ms. DeHahn, not my personal notes.
If it was today, she didn't get the notes.
No, no, no. This is from our conversations dating before December, that this was almost immediately after we had our council committee meeting. Yes.
Lisa, can you help us identify, is, is language in red what we've just added tonight at her request?
It looks like it is used the 65% because we just did that with the e-cigarette. That seemed to be a typical type of percentage that defines what kind of business you are. The 25% of the business being done in the 18 to 20-year-old demographic was just from my discussions with the council member on that number, that that would have a negative impact. And I think in, in her discussions with the owner of this business, that it would be as of the date of this ordinance, if you meet this kind of business, because there may be other hookah businesses out there that meet the requirement of this specific one. I don't know for certain of that. And that this would not apply to future businesses upcoming.
Mr. Neighbor?
I don't have enough information about this. This is all brand new. I'm not going to get to vote on it. Tammy's going to get to vote on it. But I would support Mr. Jenkins and to table it and send it back and bring, bring language and discussion in the packet so that the governing body has all the information in front of them, so they can make a reasonable decision.
Time critical.
Well, that's just.
Any other comments from the council? Mr. Kimling?
Yeah, I agree with what Jim and Eric said. I'd rather have the full information and be able to make a more educated decision than to see language for the first time at 8:35 at night and try to make up our minds on it. So, I would also be in favor of tabling.
Mr. Zimmerman?
Same.
I am not, and, I am not in favor of tabling, and at this point, I would listen and additional
Anyone from the audience want to comment on this? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Emmett Monslo, 10909, Tri Mission Parkway, Suite B. I'm looking at this as the business owner who owns the Hookah Lounge. And I have been trying to get ahold of Lisa a couple of times to kind of get a better idea, because I could have provided better guidance that maybe where we would have more definitive definition on these numbers. So, for instance, 20, 65% is, I would say, even low for, for what we do. I mean, I have maybe 20% retail. And to minors or under the new proposed bill, which would be anybody under 21, I, I don't remember the last time I sold tobacco to somebody under 21 that left the premises. Usually, it's the people in their 30s that are not wanting to be around other people. They want to smoke at home. I, I'm not really comfortable with the 25% either of the 18 to 20, because we're probably closer to 40 or 50%. And I'm not sure how that's trackable, other than, what, clover? We have a clover thing. So, I'm not sure how that can be necessarily enforced, or.
So, 25% would be lower than you're, what you're saying that your business is.
Okay. Consumption awareness, 25% of the business individuals between the ages 18 and 20 are on premise, according to the date ordinance. So, you're saying that, do I have 18 to 20-year-olds that come in, only 25% of my entire business?
No, 25% of your sales are going to people between 18 and 20.
Oh, for off-premise, like, some of the leaps?
For any.
Oh, no, no. It's probably closer to like 50, 40 to 50%. I mean, I have people come from all over Missouri. It just, it, it varies. It's kind of hard to track. Google does a good job of it, but I don't like the government watching over it, so.
I have a question. If the federal law is going to go into effect and have it be so that you can't sell to 18 to 21 anyway, I guess I'm not quite sure why we need to put this in, why we can't just pass the tobacco 21 as we have in our packet. If that's going to change your, your business model anyway.
Yeah, sorry.
Right? I'm just. No, 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 no. But I mean, once it passes at a federal level.
No, no, yeah. I, I'd also say that I was going to agree with Mr. Jenkins about maybe tabling it and seeing what they're going to do, because this whole conversation may just be moot and not matter. And then, if it federally, if the state comes down and says, hey, it's going to be 21, obviously we're going to have to buy by that, and that's going to supersede anything that the, at the city level. So, I've got some contingency plans for that too, but I, I would say that we would wait and see what the federal government does. That's what's kind of, as, like, in, in the tobacco industry, I, none of this could matter at the end of the day. Federally, it was signed by Congress, it was signed by the president, but I don't know exactly what, how they're going to enforce that or to what extent. I think there are some people talking about, like, not suing, but proceeding and trying to get some of that stuff changed, because you do have lobbyists and everything else after that. But I think that we should just table it and see where the federal government goes with it. And then, do you have any more questions?
Anyone else from the audience like to comment on this item? Mr. Jenkins?
Yeah, I haven't spent a lifetime in the federal government and dealt with our federal legislation and the way it gets converted from legislation into the rulemaking process into the federal register for actual implementation. That's a bit of a process, because there is opportunities for public comment and so on, and it goes back and forth for a while until everybody seems to settle on what, how we're going to implement this. But until I do decide on how they're going to implement this, I, I don't see us, why we should just race forward, because we got to get this done overnight. It just, it doesn't make any sense. I would, I would really like to see it table until we get that rulemaking change that comes out, the code of federal regulations, and tell where to go from there.
Is that a motion?
Okay, I'll make that a motion. A second.
Okay. A motion and a second, and I will do a roll call vote. Mr. Zimmerman?
Aye.
Mr. Neighbor?
Aye.
Mr. Jenkins?
Aye.
Mr. Kimling?
Aye.
Ms. Meyer?
Aye.
Ms. Larson Benau?
Nay.
Mr. Sandifer?
No.
Ms. Constance? Motion passes. It was tabled until?
Until the code of federal regulations comes out, we find out where we're going. No, I said, table it until the federal code, federal CFR comes out on it and tells us what the regulations are. Yeah. Pretty simple. Yep, that's it.
I'm, I'm sorry, to you. We need to recognize, do you have comments? That's fine. I just, I need to recognize you, so that listen to the audience when you're speaking, Ms. Meyer.
Yeah, my understanding of the motion was that it was being tabled until there was clarification on the hookah bar, not federal legislation.
Until it's published in the CFR, we have some kind of clarification, guidance on what it represents and how it's going to be implemented, it makes pretty good sense to say, hey, we're not going to run out of, trying to do some kind of ordinance. Right now, we don't even know where this law is going to go. I mean, that seems very commonsensical to me.
I appreciate those comments. I think it's just that when the motion was initially made, it was in the context of the hookah conversation at the beginning. That was my confusion.
Right. And I understand that. But when I made that other explanation and then the mayor said, is that your motion? And I said, oh, okay, I guess that's my motion then. And it is, it was the motion at that point.
Next item on the agenda is staff items. Item number one is to consider contract number 2019-100 with Olson, a professional services agreement for the 2020 engineering, technical, administrative services and staffing for stormwater management program. For the past several years, the city stormwater division has utilized outside firms to assist with engineering, technical, administrative tasks necessary for the stormwater programs. Staff is recommending Olson Associates for the 2020 engineering, technical, administrative services and staffing for stormwater management program in the amount of $239,764. Recommended action is consider approving and authorizing the mayor to sign the contract. Does anyone on the council have any questions? Anyone from the audience like to speak to this item? Seeing no, I'll accept a motion.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion has been made and seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion passes. Item number two is to consider bids and award contract number 2019-102 for the Jim Allen Aquatic Center Filtration System Replacement Project number 3496. On November 12th, 2019, the governing body approved the bid proposal, and two bids were received. Staff is recommending awarding the bid to Continental Pools Inc. in the amount of $175,000. Recommended action is consider approving and authorizing the mayor to sign the contract. Does anyone on the council have any questions? Anyone from the audience like to speak to this item? Accept a motion?
Would you approve? Second.
Motion's been made, seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion passes. Item number three is to consider bids, award contract number 2019-103 for the 2020 Stormwater Pipe Repair Project number 3491. Final plans were approved on November 12th, 2018. Four bids were received. Staff is recommending awarding the bid to Weiderman Inc. in the amount of $1,397,502. Recommended action is consider approving and authorizing the mayor to sign the contract. Does anyone on the council have any questions? Anyone from the audience like to speak to this item? Accept a motion?
Would you approve? Second.
Motion's been made, seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion passes. Item number four is to consider contract number 2019-104 with Affinis Corporation for Engineering Services related to Farm Road Project, Midland Drive to South City Limits, project number 3497. This project is on the capital improvement program for construction in 2020. Proposals for design and plan preparation were received from four engineering firms. Staff's recommending Affinis Corporation amount not to exceed $134,080. Recommended action is consider approving and authorizing the mayor to sign the contract. Does anyone on the council have any questions? Anyone from the audience like to speak to this item? Accept a motion?
Would you approve? Second.
Motion's been made, seconded on this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is miscellaneous items. Item number one is to ratify the semi-monthly plans for December 23rd, 2019, amount of $3,232,102.81. Is there any discussion from the council? Anyone from the audience like to speak to this item? Seeing no, I'll accept a motion.